I'd like to call the April 4th, 2022 Common Council Meeting to order. City of LaPorte will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman Julie West.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third time's a charm, Julie.
Third time, I was practicing too.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer cartoon.
Councilwoman Kineszny.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
That's it.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus, absent. Councilman Vincent, absent. Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Five present, two absent.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Petition and comments of citizens. Before we get to that or during that, you know, it's not been that long ago that the NIBC held their national tournament that was seen on ESPN nationally in January, and it seems just like, just like yesterday, and as this weekend has happened, Montverde, one of the teams that was at LaPorte, won the national championship over the weekend. Our home team, LaLamere, unfortunately was not able to, they made the tournament but lost in the first round, but I'll tell you what, that has been a special event that has kind of set LaPorte apart, and you know, none of this could have happened without the Tourism Bureau, and so Mark Triber, I think we have a brief, just kind of review and thank you to the Tourism Bureau and our good friend Leader Jack Arnett.
No, absolutely, Mayor, and appreciate that intro, and it was, I can tell you, it was such a special event, and anybody that attended it certainly would know that, or those that saw it on television, I don't think there's ever been a better assemblage of athletes that's ever been brought to LaPorte, Indiana. I mean, some of these young men will be playing in the NBA just a few short years from now, and if you were there, and if you were up close to them, and at the Civic, obviously you're all up close to them, you know exactly how special these kids were, and it was just an exciting tournament, it was great for LaLamere, I know they loved having that home court advantage, they're building a powerhouse out there, having won a national championship in 2017, but when we talk about the NIBC and what this is, it's a newly formed league, and they just had the GEICO National Championships this last weekend, five out of the eight teams in the national championship came out of this NIBC, Mountverde won it, a sixth team will be joining the league next year as they expand to ten teams. But above and beyond how great the basketball was, it was great exposure for LaPorte, Indiana, our whole community, and for the Civic Auditorium. It showed up great on TV, we got all kinds of great press out of it, but at the end of the day, we couldn't have made this happen without the Convention and Visitors Bureau, who are our good partners in so many great things we do with our parks and our lakes and the Civic Auditorium. What the CBB did for us was they put up the kids and fed the kids over at Blue Chip, we got a tremendous response from the players, the coaches, the families that were able to be treated first class, whether they were at Blue Chip or whether they were at the Civic Auditorium, and it really made us stand out, and as we were looking to do this as a lockdown and do this for future years, the CBB really was a huge partner in impressing this group, so we couldn't be more thrilled, and I know he enjoyed the tournament, and I'm sure he'd love to tell you how much he did, but we do want to acknowledge Jack Arnett, who leads the CBB and his entire team for everything they did, so Jack, we do have something for you, if you'd like to come up. So we framed up a, one of the souvenir programs, something that you can hang in your office or at home, but I don't think Jack missed a single minute of the event.
Thank you Laura Cutler, by the way.
Laura Cutler did a beautiful job on that, but Jack, just thank you so much for everything you've done for LaPorte, especially though when it comes to this NIBC, so thank you.
Credit, obviously, for putting an event like this together, does not even start or stop with me, okay? Our staff do a great job, a couple of them are here tonight.
Would you like to introduce them, by the way?
Please, go ahead, Amy, start off. Tell them everything you do, we've got a half an hour.
I'm the digital marketing manager, so I handle our website and some social media.
Katie Dermody, Community Relations Manager.
And then Gail Johnson, the Administration and Financial Manager.
We've got five other staff that couldn't be here tonight, that spent the whole time at the event, at the gate, at the door, doing everything needed to be done, so the staff did all the work, and Brett's staff were awesome, and so were, as everybody in this room, we spent a lot of hours there, it was a great event, it was, you know, we do image building at the CBB, that's what we're supposed to be doing, and this is one of the best situations we've ever had, was showcasing a community, and especially the Civic Auditorium, so we're looking forward to growing this, great partnership, and it's just a good community to be, to live in, and have brought your family up in, and be able to bring some of this back, it's really great, yeah, thank you.
And Jack, without you, none of this would have happened, and we're hoping for a summer summit with the teams this summer, and so thank you for your partnership, we'd also like to call you up, this is a great photo op for you and your team to bring around to our council, so if you don't mind, we're gonna, we've got a couple photos to take this after, this evening.
I'll stand behind Gail.
I'll stand right behind Gail.
Oh, Gail, look at this. I usually try to hide her.
One, two, Bert.
Fun, good job, Bert. Can't even choose, Bert.
And Amanda, we would like to thank all our sponsors and volunteers, because without them as well, this would not have happened, so thank you, and by the way, the best news is, is we tell everybody, you're not required to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can leave after your part is done.
Might as well.
And we know it's not Kentucky, right?
Ouch.
Yeah, or Purdue. Or Purdue, oh yeah.
But thank you all, all right. Katie, good to see you as well, as we continue the family conflict of interest this evening, Jackie Dermody, CEO of Child Family Advocates, is here, if you did not know, it is Child Abuse Prevention Month, Jackie Dermody, welcome.
So weird to stand here, I'm usually standing back there or sitting back there. So, good evening, everybody, I'm Jackie Dermody, and I'm with Family Advocates, and this is...
I'm Maggie Britson from Family Advocates.
And we are here on behalf of Child Abuse Prevention Month, we have been working to raise awareness throughout the town, and we are meeting with the different city councils, Commissioner, County Council, I met with them last week, so we have something, go ahead.
So, for the month of April, we would like to present the city council with a blue bow, we are, we have a, not a fundraiser, but, sorry, to raise awareness for child abuse prevention, the month of April, we're asking everyone to paint the town blue with blue bows, blue hearts in the windows, so we wanted to present one to the city council.
And Maggie and Becky Pressel made these, and they are making them for a small donation, and they're getting a lot of, a lot of orders, so if anybody's interested, and I made these little blue ribbons, but I'm gonna share one with everybody here, so, can I do that now?
Absolutely, are there any questions for either of these fine women?
Yeah, I do, if I buy one of those, can we put it on the mayor's truck and have him drive it around all, all month?
I'm all in.
I think that would raise awareness.
I'm all in.
We'll make sure it's a really big bow.
Good, perfect.
So I'm gonna ask if we could take one more photo, as Jackie has asked, and I know this board supports child abuse awareness, and thank you for all you do, I know you do have a tough, tough job, we see it every day.
Put your ribbon on before the picture.
Yeah, let's all put our ribbon on.
Thank you. We'll just all hold it up.
And Maggie, will you hold that ribbon in the middle before you put it up?
For now.
Amanda, will you take another, Bert?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jack.
Weirdly, we buy those ribbons if we want one.
If you want a bow, then you just email me or let me know, or just tell me right now that I can put it for you. We're asking for a tour, no, no, we will.
Awesome.
You guys are all getting in front.
Perfect, let's go, guys.
Ashley.
Fifty-five minutes, probably got it on, you need to help, Ken?
There you go, Roger.
We're right here.
You're good.
We're great. Tippy toe, Ashley, here we go.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you, Jackie, thank you. And there are events that you can share with volunteers, with technical volunteers?
Anybody that's interested in volunteering can go to laportfamilyadvocates.com, and there is a form on our website, and we are always looking for volunteers, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, somebody that has not filled out, and ladies, you are welcome to leave as well. Any other public comment, if you haven't filled out, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Dean White, my address is 3066 North US Highway 35. I'm here to request a response on the parking resolution that I had brought up before for my Airbnb downtown, and there's some apartments now are for rent downtown, and I'm wondering if we can get some resolution pretty quickly, also on my website page for the Airbnb, there's a questionnaire that I need to fill out that's saying what the parking issues are for, for my clients. The other thing I'd like to bring up is for Four Seasons Asian Fusion Restaurant, a temporary carryout parking space, I've noticed that Anzal's has two spaces in front of their door that they put a sign out for, for people that are trying to pick up carryouts, and what they're doing now is they're parking right in front of the restaurant at the yellow curb line, and that's a safety hazard. And the last thing is just a reminder about the Vista View up at Waverly and Pine Lake Avenue, right now, if you take a look at that, at that site, before the leaves are on the, on the shrubs and weeds that are growing there, you can see how beautiful of a sight that will be for our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the council's perspective, Craig Phillips, our city planner, is actually working on an overall parking, we've contracted, as you know, to a consulting firm that will address the overall parking for the city, Craig, if you could check tomorrow to see where that is on the air downtown VRBO for parking there, and we can get back, and then as well, temporary parking availability for carryout food, is that something that would go through engineering as well?
I believe so, I mean, it's ultimately up to...
Craig, if you could come to the mic, sorry to...
Sorry. Yeah, I believe so, it's ultimately up to, I believe the Board of Works to make decisions with regard to parking, so recommendations most likely to come through the engineer's office to the Board of Works, is how that would be handled.
And probably Traffic Commission.
And Traffic Commission, yes.
So Traffic Commission will be the, or was?
No, it'll be, sorry, Mayor, next Tuesday.
Yeah.
It's been rescheduled due to spring break.
Next Tuesday, 6:00 PM at the police station, and that'll be a perfect place to start with the parking, thank you, Craig.
Just to be clear, the parking study is just the downtown area, but it's the entire downtown area, not the entire city, just so...
I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, just so we're not.
You didn't know what we're working on, right?
I was like, oh, also.
Perfect, or for the downtown.
Okay, no problem.
Any other public comment? And I would like to mention Charity Hovassa, putting together the downtown organization of small businesses that we worked on, that had a meeting last week to talk about the parking and other issues, so thank you for doing that.
And the Easter Bunny's gonna be at Hot Spot.
This Saturday.
This Saturday.
All right. Well, maybe we can get, who's from the Park Department to add as an addition, what's his name?
What's his name, Mark?
Parker.
Parker!
Yeah.
Standing Committee reports, Councilman and President Frankie.
The Redevelopment Commission met last Wednesday, March 30th, the Monroe Streetscape Project was discussed, which kicks off on April 13th, and Mr. White, that'll affect the area by Four Seasons and your building as well, but you should see some improvements with that project, I think there'll be some nice additions to that area. The downtown parking study, as we just discussed, kicks off April 12th, and the Clear Lake and Truesdale Project is underway with drawings being about 30% done, and construction expected towards the end of the busy season at Fox Park, so probably fall-ish, and Smoothie King is closing on April 13th, that is the construction fencing behind Starbucks, and there's been a lot of questions about that, that is what is going in there. Infinite Development, who is responsible for the office buildings on East Shore Parkway across from Healthcare Foundation, was, was voted on and approved to offer up as part of a $16 million development that they are moving forward with, which includes 12 new townhomes for professional buildings, and 14 other townhomes as well. The city approved extending sewer and wastewater there, not to exceed $106,000, and it'll also be available for use for other residents and businesses in that area too, so I think we'll see a good ROI from that. The old Don George property is going out for offer by the end of the month, and we'll be looking for developers to submit proposals regarding what they would do with that property. The school board, I believe, meets next Monday, the 11th, they haven't updated their website yet with that, but that would typically be when they meet, and the Diversity and Inclusion Committee doesn't have a meeting scheduled yet, we're still waiting on the new HR person to take the reins of that.
Councilman Galloway.
Tomorrow night are officer elections at the VFW, and next Monday on the 11th, the Mayor's Veterans Committee, 5 o'clock at the Park Department, and a week from tomorrow, April 12th, is Police Merritt Commission meeting, 2 o'clock at the Police Department.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Nottington Report.
Councilwoman West.
Just a reminder that Wednesday will be a Fire Merritt Commission meeting at 6:30.
Councilwoman Kineszny, the other half of the world traveler.
The HPC Historic Preservation Commission will meet on April 19th in Council Chambers at 5:30. The Airport Authorities' next meeting will be next Wednesday, April 13th, at 5:15, presumably at the airport, possibly via Zoom, and then, as announced earlier this meeting, the Traffic Commission's meeting, which was originally scheduled for tomorrow night, has been rescheduled for next Tuesday, April 12th, at 6:00 PM at the police station.
And people interested in donating to the HPC Coloring Book for all schoolchildren can still do so.
Absolutely, sponsorships, so you could reach out to Robert Alt, the President of the HPC, or our friends and partners at LEAP.
Fantastic, thank you, LEAP. Craig Phillips, Redevelopment Commission Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor, so annually, the Redevelopment Commission is required to submit a report by April 15th of each year, and that, we've been working on that, putting that report together, and that's ready to submit, as part of that process, it's, it's necessary to basically give a summary of that report to the council, you should have all received a copy of that, I believe, from the Clerk Treasurer, and so I'm not going to go through this in verbatim, but I just, just focus on some key items that would be of interest. So on the first page is just some basic information about the current officers for the Redevelopment Commission, second page details the expenditures made during the year 2021 and their general purpose for each of the TIF districts, we did not have any recipients of grant or any sort of other revenues from the Redevelopment Commission, so we don't have to report anything there, we report basically the cash that's on hand at the end of the year 2021, and you have those amounts by TIF district on page four. With regard to the summary of the activities from the Redevelopment Commission during 2021, so in the Central Business District area, TIF 1, the Commission continued to work on and monitor the development of the banks formerly known as the Strand, $35 million mixed-use development, which is currently under construction in Newport Landing and set to open, I have April 2022, we're close to that, the development consists of three buildings containing 200 nude living units along with 5,000 square feet of retail, this project already, has already energized the Newport Landing development, as well as the Clear Lake, Clear Lake area and surrounding parks, planning and engineering also began on the Clear Lake Loop and Truesdale Avenue realignment project, project to complete a pedestrian pathway loop and other improvements around Clear Lake and in Fox Park, parcel was also sold as part of a development agreement for the construction of new Aldi Grocery Store, which was sold as part, which is scheduled to open in 2022, and the Commission also acquired and demolished the former car dealership property, known as the Don George Ford Dealership in a key location next to Newport Landing, and this property will be offered for development in spring of '22. In the Thomas Rose Economic Development Area, or TIF 2, work continued on the construction of a 150,000 square foot spec building, industrial building on 23 acres, the building is designed to offer flexible and multiple tenant spaces, this building is also expandable to 300,000 square feet, lease activity has been very strong while under construction, and completion is scheduled for spring of 2022. The Commission also put out a public offer for bids for development of two parcels for the new, for new economic development activities on Boyd Boulevard behind Walmart, there was no additional activity in the East Gate Economic Development Area, which is TIF 3, the American Signature Facility for the year 2021, and then in 2021, that should say, the LaPorte Town Square Economic Development Area, or TIF 4, the Commission approved incentives for the redevelopment of Maple Lane Mall, which has suffered from significant vacancy since 2017, this effort resulted in Rural King purchasing the entire 220,000 square foot mall and completing major renovations to the entire building, Rural King recently opened their new store in a portion of the mall, and the customer traffic is expected to be over 3,000 people per day, in 2020, 2021, the Commission approved the investment for 100, $550,000 for significant parking lot and landscaping improvements in conjunction with that project, and the project has made an immediate impact in the economic development area. The next item that's in the report is information regarding revenues and expenses and fund balances for each of the TIF districts, there's also detailed information with regard to each of the bonds that are outstanding within the TIF districts, and each of those are listed, and finally, just information with regard to each of the allocation, the TIF allocation areas or TIF districts, if you will, when they were established, the type of district that they were and when they expire, so any questions you have about the report, I'd be happy to answer, but otherwise, that's it in summary.
Questions for Mr. Phillips. In addition to that, thank you, Craig, I'm gonna ask Bert, because I think he has the information, we've seen the result of the banks, people already moving in, and, you know, our focus, at least my focus, my priority, is allowing LaPorte people, LaPorte residents to live their best life, this, I'm not sure who we're targeting in Illinois that you constantly hear in issues, can you give at least so far the percentage of LaPorte residents that are moving into the banks?
Yeah, absolutely, so we had 19 units, 19 people moved in Tuesday of last week, and of that first block of people, which is about 30, because you have some other additional people that are moving in shortly, probably this week, 85% of those people are from LaPorte County, there is a person from New Carlisle, there's a person from Chesterton, there's a person from Kokomo, and I think there's one person from the state of Michigan somewhere just across the border, so, again, you know, we've talked at length, I think there's just a misconception or a thought that the development was built to attract people from some other area, that's just unfortunately not true, it's never been true, and I think it's being shown by the people that are moving into the facility as we speak.
And thanks to many previous mayors, both Republican and Democrat, that saw the vision of being able to move, at least at the banks there, over 80,000 tons of contamination, so that our residents didn't have to deal with contamination for many years into the future, and have converted that into something positive.
Yeah, sometimes I think people forget that you're gonna have to, you being us, the city, was going to have to deal with that environmental issue regardless of what was built there, so by bringing in a private developer who invested so heavily into our community, they gave us a resource to deal with those environmental issues, so we're far, far ahead of where we would have been otherwise, and I think it's turned into a great development.
And then number two, I would just like to add, and we hear this on a daily basis, over 18 months now, and despite COVID, everything that's happened there, we are focused with the priority on a west side grocer, that is number one, and all the costs, the materials have really affected many grocers, opening up additional spots, and over double the cost for freezers, items that are difficult to compete with.
Yeah, I mean, I get to hear from the mayor most days in the morning about what we've done today to get us closer to a west, west side grocer, but, you know, you're exactly right, we have a great deal of interest in that area, and with the Rural King development taking off, with Rural King investing into the Maple Lane Mall, we've got a spot that obviously would work really well for, for those individuals, but the costs of construction are extremely high, as pretty much everybody knows, and so we're trying to reconcile that with the potential market that they can serve in that side of the city, so we're gonna keep working on it, but I think we are, we're close, and very hopeful that we'll be able to put something together this year.
Questions for either Mr. Phillips or Mr. Cook? Hearing none.
That report is, the annual RDC report is on the Gateway website, the state's Gateway website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Galloway, second final reading of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I'd like to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion, hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilman Galloway.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 1-2022, to establish salary for a new position in the Public Safety Department.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? In this position, if you want to just clarify...
Sure, the... Sure, the, yep, the position was previously split between MVH and the Police Department. The Police Department have decided that they need a full-time administrative assistant and that their current budget will allow them to, to hire a full-time person. So this will have, and she's been training in the clerk treasurer's office, so she knows the right way to do everything. So you're ready to go.
Further discussion, questions? Anybody from the public would like to comment? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Councilwoman West, second and final reading of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman West.
Additional, boy, additional appropriation for ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Number 2401. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, Section 1, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Laporte County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, I didn't need to read all that.
No.
Thank you.
Wow, yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. And just as a reminder, when we talked about fire and police and the situation we are currently in in the city of Laporte, that was a majority of where we're committed and investing to keep the officers that were continuing to leave out of our community, to solidify them here, and now build on this. Also, the Clear Lake Loop design and
Response team, same thing.
And the ERT team, which also will deal with equipment necessary to deal with those high-risk warrants that are in our community, so they don't have to go out with bicycle helmets, and they can actually have equipment that will protect them and allow them to go home safely to their family. So further discussion, any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Laporte, Indiana, as enacted August 24th, 2017, which is a part of Chapter 82 of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte, by amending the official zone map that are a part of the zoning ordinance in order to rezone two parcels of real estate in the City of Laporte. Whereas the parcels of real estate described below are now zoned under the zone maps as contained in the zoning ordinance of the City of Laporte, Indiana, which is part of Chapter 82 of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte, Indiana, as being in use District R1B, single-family residential district. Whereas the City Plan Commission of the City of Laporte has held a properly advertised public hearing to determine whether or not it will recommend to the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that the parcels described above be placed in a different use district. And whereas the City Plan Commission at this public hearing considered this matter required to be considered by Indiana Code 36-7-4-603, and whereas it was the recommendation of the City Plan Commission that the official zone map of the City of Laporte should be amended, so the two parcels described above be rezoned by being placed in the R2A Townhouse Residential District. And whereas this ordinance would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Laporte as enacted August 21st, 2017, and which is a part of Chapter 82 of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte, Indiana, and specifically, an amendment to the official zone map of the city as included in Article 32 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Laporte. Now therefore, be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that the following described parcels of real estate situated in the City of Laporte County of Laporte and State of Indiana to wit, parcels located on the south side of 18th Street between A and I Street, which is now located in the R1B, single-family residential district, is hereby rezoned by placed, by being placed in the R2A Townhouse Residential District. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval by mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
I do have Craig Phillips here, city planner, that will kind of discuss and present this exciting news here. Do we need to move the screen so you guys can see?
We got a cup.
We have copies, I think.
Want to see those?
Yeah.
See that?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cutler. So I'd like to provide you with some background information with regard to this request. So this is a petition from the City of Laporte for the rezoning of property that's owned by the city. The property in question was acquired through a land swap with the schools as a portion of the land swap of several parcels between the schools and the city. The school was planning on using the property for other uses, some of which may have generated much more traffic on 18th Street and nearby streets than the proposed use, which would remain housing-related uses. The property consists of roughly 4.8 acres in two parcels, one on the east and one on the west, two acres roughly on the east parcel, and 2.8 acres on the west parcel. Currently, the property is zoned R1B, single-family, and the proposal is to rezone to, rezone to R2A Townhouse District. R2A allows for single-family detached houses, single-family attached houses, duplex uses and townhouses as permitted uses. So this offers a number of different options for the redevelopment, or, I'm sorry, for the development of the site. It also serves as a buffer between the R1 zoning in the surrounding areas to the southeast and west of the property and the R3A zoning to the north, across the street, across 18th Street to the north. The current zoning, I want to make sure that it's noted, would allow for the construction of eight single-family homes with eight individual driveways onto 18th Street. And so it's important to remember that those homes, most likely people would be backing out onto 18th Street, so it would result in eight potential conflict points along 18th We recently completed the first phase of a housing study in conjunction with the county, as well as the City of Michigan City, and that indicated a need for housing of all types across the board, whether it's from affordable housing as per HUD standards and definitions all the way up to luxury housing. Those are housing types that are needed all across the country, across the county and within the city of Laporte. And that led to the development of some concepts for development of a few key sites that are owned by the city in order to help meet those housing needs and achieve the goals of housing that were developed. And as you all may have heard of the mayor's, the mayor's 30 by 30 initiative, the idea of growing the city to 30,000 by 2030, we need to provide for a multitude of different options of housing in order to meet that, that objective. The property in question is one of those three properties that I mentioned, as well as this property, it included the Beechwood Lakes property and the Tibbent Bakery parcel, which we recently established a development agreement with Habitat for Humanity for the development of. So this is the second on that list that's moving along. The property is located on 18th Street, which is a major street, which is designed to handle the kind of traffic that would be generated by the development of a site like this. Proposed development pattern, we're proposing the flexibility of including the option for single-family homes, duplexes, or townhomes, and it would be more compatible with the recently installed 18th Street Greenway path along the south side of 18th Street than standard single-family, through the minimization of the access points that I mentioned, so those eight, those eight driveways that we would have to allow based on R1B zoning, we would minimize that by restricting access to these parcels by way of an alley to each parcel, so that we have one conflict point instead of eight conflict points. And people would be pulling out onto 18th Street, most likely with the, you know, facing 18th Street rather than backing out onto it, which is also a safer configuration for pedestrians and motorists along 18th Street as well. The city is looking for a developer for the entire property. In the, we're in the process of that, and we hope to offer this property up later in the spring, or early this summer at the latest, based on the amount of, the amount of interest that we can generate for the development of this property. And we would be developing a, developing a development agreement with an ultimate party that we would, that we would seek to develop this property. That would also allow us the ability to make sure that some of the city's best interests and the residents' best interests are taken into account, more so than we would be able to do through the regular development process, because we can negotiate things as part of that agreement. So that's another important, key thing to remember. The goal is for a neo-traditional model of development, where basically the houses would face 18th Street but would be served by the alley on the rear of the property or the south end of the property, so that the homes face the street and parking and service access, if you will, things like garbage collection and other service activities would be conducted on the south end of the property. And to be clear, we are not requesting multifamily as part of this. The R2A district does not allow the development of multifamily apartment, or apartment-type development on the property. And we believe that the request, one of the, one of the key things that the council needs to find in their, if they were to grant this request, is that it's in, that it's in keeping with the countywide land development plan or the comprehensive plan, and we believe that that does that because of the statements with regard to redevelopment and infill strategy in that document, which encourages the full use of land that's within established communities throughout the county, and development that reduces the pressure on agricultural land conversion and the use of existing infrastructure, in that the site is already properly served by water utilities and sanitary sewer is located nearby and easily extendable to the property. And the countywide land development plan further calls for compact and contiguous development adjacent to existing development. And in urbanizing areas, the creation of walkable, user-friendly neighborhoods, where residents can walk to nearby schools, institutions, and nearby services, all of those are available at this property. As, as we're all aware, the school campus nearby, some local businesses nearby, and access to other facilities such as community parks, et cetera. So that's the general background of the, of the, of the property. This map shows the current zoning and the proposed zoning. You can see there the various districts, including the R1B to the southeast and west, and the R3A to the north. Just a layout survey of the property. This is the west parcel and the east parcel. This is a schematic of the, of one option of the development of the property, and this is not based on any specific proposal, but basically to show what the layout could look like based on that alley configuration that I mentioned, where the homes face 18th Street, and the gray areas that you see there would be the alleys showing the rear access to the properties.
Pardon me, Craig, where is the access for the alleys? I mean, I see the gray area, but where?
So if you see the, so you see left to right, those are the alleys themselves?
Correct.
On the south end, and then there's a, there's a north to south or up and down?
Two of those, correct.
Connection, two of those, yeah.
And then, may I ask another question?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You spoke about garbage collection and everything else being done from alleys. Currently, the city doesn't service alleys. Would this be one exception to?
Well, probably, in this development agreement, we could try to establish a collection point
Okay.
For this development, so that we minimize the, you know, I guess, the visual, the visual impact of having all the garbage collection done on 18th Street in this case.
And then as far as maintenance goes for snow removal and things like that, again, is that something that would be considered under, like, a development agreement?
It could be part of a development agreement, it could be part of a homeowners association situation, depending on how the property is developed. The city is also looking at the development of an education component, if you will, to the Torino Basin, which is the wetland area to the south of the property, included in the west parcel.
Sure.
And there's an opportunity potentially for the sharing of facilities with perhaps a parking area that might be developed in conjunction with that. So there's some options there for kind of doing, you know, doing those, combining those efforts so that there's not an, you know, kind of an overlap, if you will, of facilities there.
Gotcha, thank you.
And then, this just gives you an idea of the type of development that we're trying to attract to this facility. This is a typical, what we call neo-traditional style of development, where you don't see individual driveways, but you just see pedestrian walks up to the houses from the, in our case, the existing 18th Street Greenway path. And then this is just a couple of different views of the site, as you can see the 18th Street Greenway in the pictures, that were taken a little while ago, obviously. So.
Sidewalks upgrade.
So that's it.
Frankie Highway. Questions from the council? I mean, obviously, we've heard nonstop from our residents, housing, 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 so this is another opportunity to fulfill that need, large or small, so. Questions? Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move this to the April 18th meeting. Is that correct? Councilwoman Kenejny.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, Councilwoman Kenejny.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1-2022 to establish salary for a new position in the Human Resources Department. Now therefore, be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that Section 1, ordinance number 1-2022 of the City of Laporte, Indiana, adopted by the Common Council on January 18th, 2021, is hereby amended to add the following position: Human Resources Department, part-time administrative assistant, $24,960. Section 2, in all other regards, ordinance number 1-2022 shall be unchanged. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
So we've got great news that Corinne Fitzgerald, who retired six months ago.
Re-her back in.
By the way, she tried to get away, and we keep pulling you back in, has agreed to bring some stability to our Human Resources Department and has agreed to come work part-time. She has been fantastic. She was here her first time for how many years?
I don't even know that.
Many, many years, and has been filling in right now and has been fantastic. Will be announcing a Human Resources Director very shortly here, which we're excited about, and she will be, coming back will be a great addition to that team, so. And we know how important human resources really is. You don't realize it until you lose it, and now we're excited for the future. Questions? Questions from the public? We'll move that to the April 18th meeting. Councilman Frankie, introduction of an ordinance amending Section 2-103.
Your Honor, I move to read an amendment to an ordinance for the first time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Frankie.
And Mr. Frankie, you just have to read the amended part.
Great. An ordinance amending Section 2-103 in Chapter 2 of the Laporte Municipal Code, establishing a Commission on Sustainability. Whereas the City of Laporte Administration, after due consideration, recommends to the Common Council that an amendment be made to the ordinance establishing a Commission on Sustainability, and now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, as follows. Under terms, the following is hereby amended. Of the six members appointed, two shall be appointed for one year, two for two years, and two for three years. Thereafter, each appointment shall be for a term of two years. If a member dies or resigns, his or her successor shall be appointed to serve the unexpired period of the term to which his or her predecessor has been appointed. The mayor may remove commission members for cause, which is a legitimate justified reason related to legal misconduct, but for no other reason. End of amendment.
Discussion?
Mayor, just real quick, there, there Mayor, just real quick, there, there was an error in the terms, in the staggered terms to start the, start the board, so that, this is just correct, a technical correction.
Further discussion? From council? Further discussion? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Great, we will move this to April eighteenth, to the next meeting. Other business? I would like to welcome everybody on April eleventh to the county council meeting at five thirty at the county building. We'll be having an open meeting regarding the police, public safety, and fire, lit, local income tax. You know, this has been going on for some time, we're to the final stages, and some of the discussion has been, well, why do we need that amount of money? What's, you know, what's the question there? And even though any, no one has ever come to the council meeting to bring that question up, and we've really not had any opposition publicly here or at any of those meetings where we traveled around the town boards and presented this. Just to give you an idea, to stop the officers from leaving, like we've seen fire and police, we, the council, committed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars right there every year to keep our public safety team in order. So we would generate close to, at a point five oh, one point eight million dollars estimated, that alone right there is seven hundred fifty thousand. And I understand, just from a police perspective, that is for forty-four officers. To do something, to be proactive, to address the drug issue that we want to be proactive of, and, you know, we just had a twenty-six-year-old last week pass overdose, passed away from a good family, a quality family. And we see it every day with fentanyl, this is a different day, fentanyl coming in to our community, every community across the nation, in fact, and we have to be more proactive to do things. Even if we just wanted eight more officers to bring to the recommended fifty-two officers, that's at least another six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which brings us to close to one point four million. That doesn't include automobiles, that doesn't include technology, that also doesn't include, right now, our fire department has only been given one set of protective clothing for years to fight fires. Every other community around is given at least two sets of expensive firefighting gear to protect them. We hope in year five that, in the past, that we're able to purchase a second set of gear for our firefighters. That, to provide two sets initially for firefighters, is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Those are, we're well over the amount of money that we think is required to keep our community safe and address the problems. Yesterday at Ben Reese Park, I happened to be there walking, and middle school individuals were there. We brought two officers over, there were about twelve kids there, and two officers came over with me. That left two officers to deal with everything else in the entire city and to pick up the marijuana and alcohol that was thrown into the bush as the kids took off. This is an ongoing problem, and it's, when you hear our community, or some members of our community saying, oh, how much they pay in taxes? Thank you to the property tax cap. We, as a county, give thirty-two million dollars back to homeowners in the form of credit that they don't pay. We lose twenty-five percent of it. Michigan City loses thirty-six percent of our budget. All we're asking for is a third of that to come back to provide the necessary care and protection for our residents. So I encourage anybody that has questions to call, call me on my cell, but come to the meeting, talk about this. To me, again, we say it's not about dollars and cents, it's about life and death, and this is a battle we're losing right now in the public with the drug situation, and we have to do more to fight that and to protect our future. So I just want to encourage everybody on April eleventh at five thirty at the county, hopefully to come out in support, but either way, make sure your voice is heard.
And Mayor, that's just a public hearing or making a vote?
That is a public hearing, that, they have a couple other minor issues, they will have the reading heard for the first time, and then April twenty-eighth will be the vote, and I encourage everybody coming there, and we'll announce that. And it's fantastic that I've heard from at least five to six of the county council members that have committed to voting yes for this. And I can't believe anybody would look not only in the eyes of the police or fire, but in our eyes, in the public's eyes, and then not vote for it after committing to it. And again, this is not a Republican, a Democrat issue, this is a public safety issue. So questions about that? Questions from the public about that?
And all of the surrounding areas, how many were there?
Yeah, and Rick Ogil, please come forward. Thank you. State your name and address.
Rick Ogil, nineteen oh-two, Indiana Ave, LaPorte. Who will be taxed on a local income tax? Everyone?
Everybody that's currently taxed now, so.
What does that mean?
Well, every, we pay, and for years, residents of the city of LaPorte and Michigan City and the county pay a local income tax.
So it is not just property owners?
No, this is not a property.
If you live in the city of LaPorte, you will pay a local income tax, correct?
Yes.
If you live in the county of LaPorte, you will pay.
If you work.
You currently pay an income tax if this passes, and you will pay a public safety tax, which is a half of one percent. And for example, somebody making twenty thousand dollars a year will pay approximately eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month.
That's, that's for everyone that lives in the city of LaPorte.
It's not just property owners, correct?
But then also too, social security is not taxed, correct?
Correct. Anybody? Laura was not suggesting, Rick.
Oh, no, not at all. Not at all.
That wasn't meant to you, but that was a general statement. So further questions?
This is a tax, I mean, if you already pay it, if you pay taxes, if you're doing your taxes right now, it's, it's a box on your state income taxes, you're already paying this, it's a, you're, you're proposing an increase to the percentage, correct?
Correct. A half of one percent, and I would encourage anybody, you can get public record from our fire, police, the county, the jail, those sheriff calls, you can see the, how the calls have gone up. The amount of our fire department, how many times they're basically Narcan-ing an overdose victim a week. But as well for the county and the issues, you see the gun violence in Michigan City, you see those issues happening. I'm trying to look, we are trying to look, this is bigger than the city of LaPorte, this is the county, this is the city of Michigan City, all working together, where eleven out of eleven town councils have passed this, and we think this is time that, what, seventy-one of ninety-two counties have already passed? And we're hopeful that we can provide protection for everybody. Other items?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, everybody have a great night, thank you.